liability and value to the Aspen community. And we're open to any further questions.
Thanks for that. I think this comes off of some of the questions or the question that I was asking. That was a lot of answer. My question was simple. I was wondering what the amount of money that we were looking at is an increase to our lowest tier residential users? And how that amount of money would be or could be spread out amongst other users impacting larger users? And my exact example was about conservation efforts that we have done. So I appreciate all the programs that we do. I was looking for math to figure out how, what, what this percentage increase for the lowest tier users and residential means to our revenue? And how we could insulate those lowest tier users from it? So, you know, I have a lot of faith in what you guys do. I know that you hear counsel. And I've been talking with Tyler about this very issue for the last five and a half years. So I know that my points are well taken. And I also expect and appreciate the efforts that you make in the areas that I ask. So I don't think you answered my question, but I get it.
So I'll just step in there. I don't hear a question for staff to respond to. We do think that that would be a larger conversation about the rate modeling philosophy, which was designed to have each user pay its fair share. Instead of having certain rate groups subsidizing other rate groups. So I do think that's a policy level conversation that if there's direction to have, we'll be happy to come back with it. But I don't think staff has any more comment on that. We'll just wait until if other actual questions are directed toward staff. Thanks.
Understood. Thank you. This is a public hearing, but before that, questions or comments from counsel? Ward?
No, I'll wait till the public hearing. Sorry, I jumped the gun here again.
Bill?
My only challenge with these proposed fees are, are both water and electric tap fees. Electric is called community investment fee. Water is called a tap fee, right? Essentially the same thing. These are fees that are incurred when somebody is, is redeveloping their property and, or renovating their property and the, the size of the service, whether it's the diameter of the water line serving the property, or the amperage of the power service to the property needs to increase. I believe that we've emailed about this, Justin, and please correct me if I'm wrong. I think the proposed increases are about 11% each, somewhere in that neighborhood.
For ECI fees, it's 15% for the 100 to 400 amp services, and then 20% for 600 amp and above.
And on the water side?
Should be 11%.
11%, sorry, I thought I remembered that number. Thanks for clarifying that point. And I guess since this is an opportunity for questions, perhaps you guys can sort of explain why those increases are proposed as high as they are. Perhaps you can refresh us on what the last couple of years of increases have been. My experience is that these things are increasing rapidly, the cost for these. And, and, you know, we're all, there's a lot of interest in this community in electrifying more things. But whether an entirely electric property is feasible today is still kind of in question. So we're putting more electricity into these houses. We're, we're trying to electrify more things. And that's significantly increasing the cost of, of the gross cost of these tap fees when developing a property. So I'm sensitive to this because of my professional experience. But it's starting to feel pretty inflationary and aggressive to me, and I'm hoping you can kind of speak to that a little bit, Justin, please.
Yep, Bill, the main driver for these proposals is the substantial cost increases for capital projects, labor and materials due to these inflationary pressures. I think you've, we've seen large double digit construction cost increases locally. And while, you know, these, these proposals don't completely keep up with that inflation, it does capture, you know, those, those increasing costs of our infrastructure. I think it's important to, to highlight is customers from an ECI perspective, they do get a dollar for dollar credit when they, when they come to upgrade their service. So that, that 100 amps that you had paid in, in years past, if you are, you know, only, if you're going to a 200 amp, let's call it, you're only paying that delta for 100 amps. You're not paying the full delta of 200 amps.
Let, let me clarify that statement. So is it a dollar for dollar credit or it's a service line delta credit? Because if you, you know, the, the ECI fee is only a few years old. So if someone, if someone developed their property 10 years ago even, and they have to upgrade from 100 to 200 for whatever reason, they paid zero in ECI.
Yeah, you're, you're correct. It's that service delta from what the, the current 200 amp minus what the 100 amp is. And that's the delta you would pay.
Thank you.
And I think that, you know, that this is certainly a space where we're continuing, continuously reviewing our rates and fees to ensure we're meeting the community and utility revenue costs with this.
Thank you. Further question would be, is the intent of the ECI fee and the water tap fee to offset the specific impacts of increased service on the system and the utility?
Yeah, it's that, it's that customer's proportional share ownership of the utilities infrastructure. And rates and services needed to, you know, continue in a successful manner.
So have any of the capital projects, you talked about inflationary pressures on capital projects. Have any of the capital projects that we are currently doing or have done recently dealt with providing increased capacity in either of these utilities? Or it, you know, from, at least from the council goal perspective, it's been about replacing aging infrastructure? If we're not increasing capacity to offset the, the impacts of increased service demands on specific properties, then we're really just using this fee to pay for upgrades to our infrastructure, not offset the specific demands. And that, that doesn't meet the intent. So the question is, are, are we increasing capacity or not?
I would say it all depends on the capital development or the project at hand. You know, more often than not, yes, there is that increased capacity that's, that's being requested from a project.
So Bill, just to be specific, when we go back and replace electric cable with new cable, we're replacing with the exact same size cable. It just has another 30 year lifespan. So the capacity is the same, but we're renewing it for the next 30 years. There are probably instances where we find a six inch water main, but our minimum size standard these days is eight inch. So yes, we do increase capacity there, but it's meeting our standards. So it's, it's not our intent to increase capacity because our existing system, we believe, is well positioned for stuff like electrification. But it's at the end of its useful service life, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you for that clarity. What, what's, what's giving me pause here is if we're using the money generated by these fees to replace aging infrastructure, for lack of a better term, and not to increase capacity in the system, then there's not a justified reason for charging this fee. The way that it's worded, I don't think, and I'm, I'm, this may be a longer conversation for, for Jim to look at later. But this fee is meant to offset the impact to more demand on the system. And if we're not, if we don't need more capacity to meet that increased demand, then why are we charging this fee?
However, our infrastructure does, as increased demand, require more frequent maintenance and replacement. So there's a wear and tear component that particularly on the electric utility, that's pretty significant, that is, is contributed to that. More than happy for us to come back to you with that conversation in more detail. So we can provide you some examples, and that includes, you know, I think pulling some permits that have had to pay this and autonomizing them enough that we can go through that process for the benefit of the entire council. If that would be of interest to the group to, to see how this developed, why we have this, these two fees. They are both very critical fees, in my opinion, of maintaining the utilities and being an independent utility for, for those capital components. The other thing is, is that it's a key part of your rate structure. And so if you don't pick it up on this end, you need to pick it up on your rate structure. So that's really a council policy decision about where that would go. And, and we'd be happy to prepare for that conversation as well.
Yeah, I guess my point and my concern is, should, should the funds used for some of these projects that we're doing be coming from a tax? And, and is, is a tax more appropriate than a fee? You know, are, are we putting the burden on new development where it doesn't belong? And, and that's my fundamental question.
Thanks for the feedback.
For my specific projects or anything, I just, the language that Justin was using and the language in these memos got me kind of thinking about it. Are we really just using this feed to pay for upgrading our existing infrastructure, which doesn't feel appropriate to me?
Thanks for the feedback. I think that's something that could be part of our larger conversation in understanding the enterprise nature required of utilities here in the state. There's a lot of regulatory components that you're getting into as well. So we can examine that, but I don't think we are prepared to respond to that tonight.
And, and I, I get your conversation there, Bill. I, I'd wonder, you know, as I think about it, I'm like, well, improving the longevity or infrastructure improvements is for capacity. I mean, ultimately, they're kind of related, right? Like, as we all know, we have these brownouts, we have whole, whole, whole bundles of wires that do meltdowns, right? So if we didn't upgrade those and make those in better condition, then to me, it kind of is a capacity question, you know?
Yeah, I guess the, to, to play devil's advocate, like, isn't everyone benefiting from those improvements? And so shouldn't this be on all customers or all community members? Like, why are we shifting that burden so heavily to somebody who's upgrading their electric service? Because they are, you know, are using more electricity in their renovated condo than they were before?
Yeah, I, I do, I do think so. I mean, and, and this is a deeper conversation, but at this time, yes, I, I do think it's appropriate. I think that those that are demanding it need to definitely, the community is already sharing in. The community is sharing in through the rates that we pay, et cetera. So I, anyway, I, I get your discussion. I, I see them a little bit more related, but I, I understand what you're saying. I got a hand up from Ward. Ward, go right ahead. This is a public hearing, so I will open it up to the public.
Yeah, and I think if my comments are, I, I was gonna have comments in line with what Bill's bringing up. But it, it's not so much with the fees that are proposed. But what my concerns are, is that I, I think there's gonna be increased demand for electricity. And I think that's, that I think is a good thing because one of our goals is to protect the environment and decrease greenhouse gases. So this, these tying in with our environmental health and our greenhouse gas reductions and is more, when there's more demand for electricity because it's decreasing greenhouse gas. We're, we're getting in on these areas that Bill's bringing up. And I think it is, I think I would really like to see grants or core money go to help offset the increase. The transformers are really, I think, the biggest, when you go to a larger demand, a larger amperage, that the individual that is actually doing a good thing by decreasing their greenhouse gases, and in turn it increases their luck, the demand for electricity. But I, I really think that this is a, a larger philosophical and holistic approach that needs to be discussed outside the confines of this, this ordinance. I'm supporting this fee ordinance, but I, I do want to have these discussions because if we, if we didn't want a business downtown to increase their energy efficiency, reduction of greenhouse gases, and that requires them to, to increase their electrical demand, I'd like to find a way to help offset that cost through a grant or through ramp or state or federal grants in, in the pursuit of our, our goals of decreasing our greenhouse gas emissions. But for this issue at hand and on the table now, I, I support what's being proposed, but I thought it was an appropriate time to comment on the issues that Bill is raising.
Thank you. That's a good addition to the conversation. Any other council comments or questions before we open to the public? This is a public hearing on ordinance number 20. This is changes to Title 25, the utility rates, public hearing. Are there any members of the public?
I just have a comment.
Hold on.
But, but I can wait, yes.
Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council table. John?
Oh, yes. I just wanted to point out that we do have some of the lowest water and power rates in the state. Just a little higher than some other locales locally, but I fully support staff's recommendations on this.
Thank you. Other council questions or comments, and then we can take a motion. I would make a motion to pass ordinance number 20, changes to Title 25, utility rates, public here, utility rates on second reading.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Further discussion?
I, I just have trouble supporting this with, I, I actually have more trouble supporting it now as I've spoken through this and, and thought about it tonight. Because I think there might be a fundamental issue with the way that we're assessing this fee. And I'm fine with everything with the exception of the tap fees. And I'd like some more discussion on that and, and analysis of that to make sure that we're assessing that appropriately.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call vote for the motion, which is for ordinance number 20 on second reading?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
No.
Counselor Hovensstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes. And there was a request from Bill to get some more information around this. Again, we're not going to call for a work session, but if perhaps there is some info that we can get to Bill or Bill can have a meeting or whatever it takes to kind of talk further. And I also, I think Ward brought up a very interesting point there as well. So I think there's more discussion around this as it moves forward. With that, we are moving to action items. We're gonna keep on going. It's seven o'clock. Resolution number 137. This is update to short term rental program guidelines.
Counsel, while they are setting up, Emmy and Ben will be back in quarter one to give you a full update on now two years of data from the STR code changes. So just want to let you know that, that's coming. But we felt it was more important for, to get this out ahead and front to support our permit applicants and permit recipients. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Emmy Oliver, Lodging and Commercial Corps Program Manager. I have Ben Anderson with me, Community Development Director. I have a few brief slides. May I share my screen?
Please do.
Thank you.
And while you're doing that, I'll just say, Ward, I couldn't help but notice after last night's work session on psilocybin, your background was changed today.
Well, yeah, it's the Northern Lights, but it had to be something different.
You're facing the wrong way.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Again, we are here with a update to the short term rental program guidelines document. It is resolution number 137. So this document is the companion document to the short term rental regulations. It lives outside of the land use code. And its pretty much primary function is to assist our customers in participating in the short term rental program. So it has information for our customers about, about the program in general. It tells them operational requirements, financial obligations, and so on. So you can think of it as essentially a, a user manual for our STR customers. The current version and the cover you see right here on the screen, this current version was adopted in 2022. And that was just prior to the beginning of the program operation as we see it today. So while the current version very much parallels all the information in the land use code, over the last two years of operating in this program, you know, we've received a lot of feedback from our customers about some information gaps that we didn't have full information to include in this 2022 version. And so the intention of these updates today is really to fill those gaps and make this really, you know, a complete and well-rounded document for our customers. And amendments to this document do need to be made by council resolution. You all are the final authority on that. So in summary, we are not proposing any policy changes whatsoever in these updates. And nothing in the updates will change the way the program has been functioning for the last two years. We're really just adding information and expanding on some topics that were currently existing. The primary function of the updates is to provide additional clarity on our application processes as well as our customers' interaction with MuniRev, which is the software that they use to apply for permits and, you know, submit their taxes. We've also made some organizational updates too. We feel that that will improve the user friendliness for our customers and makes it a little bit more intuitive for them to reference as they have questions. What's on the screen right now is the proposed table of contents in these updates. You'll notice these table of contents don't look very different at all from what is in the current version that we're working out of right now. Again, the main changes here are the addition of section seven, which is about interacting with the MuniRev software. And then we've also really flushed out section six, applying for permits to incorporate a lot of details on our application and permit renewal processes. There are a few other additions and, and sections that we have, you know, expanded on. I don't want to go into too much detail about those. You have a pretty detailed list in your info memo. So while we have you here, as Sarah mentioned, right now, our, our permit renewal, sorry, Ben actually talked about this earlier, but our permit renewal process is underway right now. That actually opened on Friday. So our current customers have until January 14th of 2025 to renew their permits for next year. And then as soon as that permit renewal process closes in January, we will be looking to come back to you for a work session. At that time, we'll have two full years of program data and performance that we can share with you. And we're looking forward to a discussion of some of those larger kind of policy level items that, you know, we've heard feedback from our customers about especially, and may potentially require some land use code changes. So that is really it. If you have questions about the updates to the guidelines document, I'd be happy to answer those tonight. And then, of course, looking forward, if you have any items that you'd like for us to bring back that you know of right now to that work session in Q1, I'd be happy to write those down and bring those back to you.
Thank you so much. Would you start just by a, a, a brief response to Ben Wolf's comments at the top of the meeting? He was talking about the HOA sign off, basically. There's no change to that in this resolution. But what he was saying about simplifying the process, his suggestion was after the first year to not have to do it again and again for the same property. Anyway, do, do you have any comment towards that? Because the only reason I asked that at this time, instead of waiting until next quarter, one, he was here this evening. Two, it's not really, it wouldn't fall into cleanup, but maybe. So if there was, if there was a desire to simplify that.
I do think that that is amongst a host of issues that I think would be best conceptualized in potential code changes. Because those HOA documents that we require, they're fundamental to every land use application that we do, every building permit that we get. I understand Mr. Wolf's comments. You know, I think we've heard some similar conversations around process related to signage, you know, signage requirements previously. So I do think that there's things like that that I think would be good to contemplate, consider. I do think that there's reasons for them that I think we would want to explore a little bit. But I, I will say that across our processes in ComDev, those HOA forms are important to us. I understood his comments about, you know, well, the HOA could still, if the city gave a permit and the HOA didn't want to have short term rentals, that creates some problems for us when we issue something that is, is contrary to what an HOA might desire on their property. And it, we found that it'd be, it's very helpful out of those forms. I get his point about process. Maybe there's some redundancy there that we could explore, but it would require us to kind of change some of our procedures around that. We think that there's a series of issues like that that I think staff has encountered, that we've heard from our customers that I think would likely need some, some code changes. This document really is, is, is not proposing any of that. It's not adjusting the program at all from the way it currently functions. It's really just to improve the customer experience. But we do know, whether it's, you know, process things like the HOA form and, and our signage requirements, or I think much more substantial changes that he also mentioned this evening, like thinking about different caps in the RMF zone district. Certainly questions for council to consider, but all of that stuff, both big and small, probably requires a code change.
So that'll be something that would come back in the work session in 2025. Thank you for that. For me, questions to address, just what I'm gonna be looking for is some information around the outstanding applicants in the different zones. I want to better understand what the STR market and those that are seeking permits, that can't get them, mean. So that's my main area of interest when we get to that next work session is about the, the caps that we have in different zones. And I'd like some information about the applicants that are outstanding. John and then Sam?
Yeah, I'd like to know about, more about violations in our STR program. Of what nature were there? Were they, how many were there? The locations? And were they licensed or not? Thanks.
Thank you. Sam?
I'm good now. Thank you.
Bill?
Emmy, my only question on, on your first question there about 137, I know you mentioned this. I just want to be crystal clear about it. The updates to the guidelines are informational only. There are no processes that change, no additional burden on applicants or license holders created by this document in any way, shape or form, right?
Correct. You're absolutely correct. It's really just providing additional clarity to what we've been doing.
Thank you. And your second question, Ben, specific to the HOA compliance form, one idea might be, could a HOA do an annual bulk consent? Or a, you know, every, twice a year? And as part of that form, do they agree that if they change their HOA regulations, they need to notify you, something like that?
I think there's several ways that could be handled to try to reduce some of that burden that was described.
I do think it's a good point. You touched on permit cap levels, so I'd like to make sure we revisit, revisit that. I, I'd like to have some information on how the tax on short term rentals is comparing to estimates? Original estimates, not our current budget estimates, but our original estimates? One sort of more challenging thing to evaluate is, what are we learning about what's falling through the cracks? So, you know, we know there's an easy way to create a 31 day lease and do a use restriction to a certain number of days. Do, is there any way to evaluate how much of that's happening? Should we be contemplating a different way to apply this tax? Rather than all these different rates, whether somebody is a full-time resident or a second homeowner and charging the renter a different tax rate because of that, should we just have an equal rate across all rentals less than 30 days? I understand some of these are like fundamental and philosophical questions, but would, could the program be more successful if we rethought some of those initial assumptions? Is, is there any, is there any empirical data at this point about how, how this program is preserving or generating housing for primary residents? I think that was one of the initial goals of this program. Can we look back and demonstrate any results? Are we meeting those goals? I think those are my primary interests for the work session. Thank you.
If there's no more questions, we can take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 137, Series of 2024, update to the short term rental program.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for Resolution number 137, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done. It's not that bad, right? Yes.
Thanks, Emmy.
Absolutely.
Thanks, y'all.
This brings us to the EOTC budget item on our agenda. Our thanks to Linda and John for being here for the duration of the meeting.
Sorry about that.
I can't imagine anywhere else I'd want to. Yeah, right.
I second that. Thank you, Mayor and councilors. I am Linda Dupree, Regional Transportation Director, Elected Officials Transportation Committee, and?
John Peacock, County Manager for Picken County.
At our EOTC meeting on October 24th, we presented the 2025 work plan and budget. The Picken County Board of County Commissioners and Town of Snowmass Councilors both approved it. Aspen City Councilors had some additional questions and needed more information about the budget. That's why we're back here tonight. We received two sets of questions from you all. The first five, we addressed in the agenda item summary that was in the packet. And then another couple of questions came informally through an email. I'm not sure if those answers made it into the packet. We can go through those questions or take additional ones from you all now. However, you'd like to proceed.
Yeah, sounds good. Councilors, any questions at this time? I see a hand up from Ward. Ward, I'll go to you.
Ward, you're muted.
Muted.
Karen, those are my best comments of the night. Yeah, good seeing everybody in 2D. I had a question about the 2024 initial budget for, for wages and salaries was 125, 066. And then the end of 2024 year end estimate was 48, 148, 5, 546, 546. What's, what's the reason for the delta from the end, beginning of the year and the end of the year on that line item?
Sure, I'll, I'll go ahead and take that one, Ward. So between 2023 and 2024, the county undertook a major evaluation and its subsequent change to our pay plan to ensure that it supports the recruitment and retention of highly qualified employees. And that all of our employees are aligned fairly in their respective ranges, their pay ranges, based on relevant work experience. So during that process, the, the county set a pay philosophy. We established very wide pay ranges. They're, they're 75% width. And a philosophy that employees would move through that range in 20 years. That's roughly about 3% a year. Prior to that analysis and change in pay philosophy, the county had limited the maximum hiring range to the top of the first quartile of what was a narrower range, regardless of an employee's experience coming in. And, and a lot of that was to deal with economic uncertainties, you know, over the past five years, seven years, coming out of COVID and such. And so what it created as we moved into our new pay system is that we were beginning to give credit for the experience that employees were bringing in and placing folks in the range based on their, their years of experience. But our employees that had been hired prior did not have that benefit. And so we had compression and we're creating a situation where in some cases, it might, may have made more sense to quit a job and reapply for it with the new pay philosophy. So we went through what we called a placement and range study that really looked at all of our employees, their applications, past resumes, took all relevant experience and placed them in their ranges based on that experience. So in some cases, and the EOTC was one of those, there was a significant amount, about 13 years of experience that was not recognized in that placement. We did not budget for that in each of the different funds because we didn't have the analysis at that time. So in, in this case, in 2024 mid-year, there was a budget adjustment to recognize that change in, in the placement and range, and that was a 21% increase. We only have one employee in the EOTC budget. And so because we had that significant increase, that's what caused that change that you're referring to mid-year.
That mid-year, the salary, the compensation for the one employee of the EOTC increased $6,628 in the middle of the, the year 2024?
Yeah, so we had budgeted about four and a half percent in each of our funds. And the, our EOTC employee received a 4.5% increase in, on February 11th. But later in the year, in April, we had our placement and range results. And that did increase by 21% for those employees, for that employee to move to within the market point of the range. And that happened in April. And a budget adjustment was made mid-year for that purpose.
And is, is Linda the only, is her, her only responsibilities for EOTC? She's, she's compensated through the county's process, through the county's pay structure. Everything goes through the county at the Picken County, Aspen and Town of Snowmass Village share in, in those expenses a third each way? Is that correct?
Not exactly. The use tax that supports the EOTC is a county tax. And it is a county revenue that's appropriated by the county. But in getting that tax approved, at, at the time, Aspen had, I believe it was a use tax, I, I would have to go back and double check that, that Aspen gave up in order for there to be a countywide tax for transit. So in exchange for that, when we put the ballot question on, we created a governance mechanism, which is the EOTC, where we have shared budget decision-making on that county revenue. And so that is why each entity, City of Aspen, Town of Snowmass Village and Picken County all have to agree on the budget appropriation. But the county actually appropriates it. The county, since it is a county revenue, is the, you know, we, we are responsible for the funds. And so as we've been making appropriations, they've always been part of the county budget. They're not part of the City of Aspen's budget or Town of Snowmass Village's budget, if that makes sense. And so, yes, we have one employee. Linda is a county employee and is subject to county policies and, and pay policies.
Just to be clear on this, John, that the, the three entities that are involved with the EOTC defund the budget and Linda's part of that budget?
It is a county tax that funds the entire budget. So there's no revenues coming from the City of Aspen per se, like from the City of Aspen budget or Town of Snowmass Village budget. It is all within the county budget. But because we are agreeing to consolidate taxes, we created the governance structure of shared decision-making, which is the EOTC for that county tax.
Hang on, Ward. Yeah, Sarah?
Yeah, I just think part of the confusion for this council is, is that when the EOTC was here in August, it wasn't clear whether additional appropriations were being made for the personnel expenses. And that was not in the budget supplemental information provided to the council in August. And so we could use some clarity around if there's additional appropriations that are being made, since this was a decision made in the personnel policies in April. And was that funded with EOTC funds? And did it require supplemental appropriations? And what is the process then when that piece may not have gone to the three jurisdictions? Because it is not in the agenda item at all. I, I pulled it up to double check that it was not provided to us on August 13th. Thank you.
No, in August, I was here to get approval for two additional projects to be added to the work plan and budget in 2024.
And so we did not go for the additional appropriations as absorbed in contingencies and then included in the 2025 budget. The other piece of increase on personnel in the 2025 budget is also health insurance. I, I think you all are familiar, we've all had a pretty bad year in, in the valley. And so the, the county has taken on an additional 25% increase on, on the health insurance also.
Yeah, that's a given across the board, I think. And then the other employee benefits have increased from 2024 to 2025 as well. I, I guess, my, my level of discomfort with approving this budget is that I, I, I need to have a demonstration that the EOTC is really serving the needs of the city. And I don't, at this point, I'm, I'm just not feeling that it's really benefiting the city that much. And so, you know, I'm, I'm going to yield to you on the salary and wages and when you did an increase and it wasn't part of a budget and you had that as part of a contingency. But for me, this is just not transparent at all. And we've had no review. And Linda, this is in total respect for what you do, but for transparency, we've had no, no review, no, in the budget. I don't know who prepared the budget, but the, the reason that we had questions about where, I think it was the, there was a line item that funded X Games, I think it was. And, and we didn't even know where that was. It was somewhere buried in under other. So I, I just really want to have a wider discussion with the county and perhaps with the Snowmass Village. But I, I just want to see that we're really getting something out of the EOTC and this government's governance structure. To me, just, I have, I have questions about the benefit it's giving to the city.
Thank you, Ward. Other questions? John?
Just comments. I appreciate your explanation, John. And, but I got to say, when we were presented with the budget, it did seem unintentionally, but it was vague. And the one thing that did stand out to several of us at this table was Linda's salary increase. So anyway, thanks for the explanation. I support this budget going forward.
Thanks. Bill?
Thank you for all the explanations of the information. I don't have any specific questions on this. I do have a request. I understand this is not the perfect venue for this, but I would love to see you working alongside the city and RAFTA on trying to implement fare-free, system-wide transit on RAFTA. And I think, I think EOTC funds would be a great use for that. So I don't know what the process for getting that rolling would be. We, we have discussed it at the city level with, with staff. But I think EOTC funds could be a great use for that. So thanks for the budget. Sorry to bring this up at the inappropriate time, but it's something I'm quite interested in. I think it helps with, with traffic. I think it's good for commuter morale. I think it can, over the long term, really enhance our mass transit system, et cetera. So would appreciate any work on that effort.
I have taken that to the RAFTA board and talked to our director there. And so that is in discussion. I can't say it's in planning yet, but it's in discussion. You know, we're coming off a couple of years where there was an inability to service that, right? As you know, so we're coming out of that and they feel comfortable having that discussion. What we talked about is even a pilot program, a test to try to find out what it, what impact it can have. So that is going on. But I do agree with you that EOTC would probably be able to be a partner in that and funding or what have you.
I, I think, if, if I could just respond, I, I think that would fall in the four squares. I think that would be part of, you know, part of the reason we set up the process of having a work plan and such is so that entities like Aspen would have an opportunity to bring these types of ideas forward, get the buy-in from all the entities, because all of you have to agree, right, as bodies for us to, to make the expenditures. And so if that is a request, that's an appropriate conversation to have at that EOTC table. And if it's about first getting a, a study and proposal together, that could be part of a work plan as long as the, the county and, and Snowmass agree. And, you know, I think that's a legitimate discussion and fits within the four squares of the tax. And so that, that would be the, the way to move that forward.
Fantastic. Thanks.
Thank you. Other questions? I just had a couple. So one of the items that came up was the X Games funding. I think it's $115,000. And in the budget, there is a line item that says?
Other grants and contributions.
Other grants and contributions.
Yes, it's there.
And what else is there?
$140,000 is the EOTC's annual recycle contribution for the Valleywide East.
Those two items make up that, that line item. Then below that, other expenditures, almost $400,000.
Then, below that, other expenditures, almost $400,000, and you provided us some answers to that, and it said something about contingency for $200,000, and, let's see, it's contingency and overhead.
Right.
What's contingency?
So particularly because of last year, when we only met once, we realized there would be situations where we might need to supplement a project or need additional funds for an opportunity that came up. And the contingency item is just to give us some ability to do that. An example is if a grant opportunity came up that required a match, and we weren't scheduled to meet to ask you all for a budget supplemental for that. One example that did come up in 2024, and we had to take it from another line item, was the regional EV grant opportunity, the federal grant, where we partnered with six other counties in the Northwest COG region, and we needed to hire a grant writer to put that together for us. We helped fund that. So it's likely we would never need near $200,000, but we wanted to be able to take advantage of opportunities in the case that we couldn't come back to the full EOTC board to ask for it. Another example would be in the process of a consultant project that we're working on, if we needed to expand the scope, given how the work was progressing, if more questions came up that we wanted to address, that we would be able to do that.
Another question that I had for you was on the line item that is delineated for the AABC. There is the AABC Bike Ped Transportation Plan, $200,000. I saw a notation or a note that said that some of that monies would be spent this year?
When we first decided we wanted to do a planning project out there, we came to you all on August 13th, and Towne-Somas Village on August 19th, and then Pickens County a few weeks later. You all and Snowmass approved that item, but the county had additional questions. So that sort of made the project move out a little bit further for us. We were thinking we were going to get started on it in 2024 and might have some expenditures in 2024. Now it looks like we will, if you all approve the budget tonight for 2025, we'll be able to get started on putting the RFP together, but it isn't likely that we'll be spending any money on it until 2025. So nothing's spent in 2024 on that.
Thank you. And I understand it's a Bike Ped Transportation Plan. Are there infrastructure improvements that are part of that? Are we talking about roadway improvements, sidewalk improvements, and that?
The $200,000 was the estimate for hiring a consultant to do the planning for us and to come up with some infrastructure solutions. We may not have to spend all of that on that. But the infrastructure improvements that would be recommended out of a plan would be in addition to that. This is just for the planning process and engineering analysis.
Are the roadways in the ABC privately owned, or are they county roads?
County roads.
I am prepared to support. Last question maybe. Did we schedule our next EOTC meeting for sometime in January?
We haven't... Does Sarah and John want to speak to that?
I do. So councillors, as you have shared with me individually, and I was hoping it would be a follow-up soon, I believe this council wanted to have its own independent conversation around the IGA governance of these funds in preparation before scheduling any meeting. Additionally, even the chatter today between the managers has been that there needs to be, rather than scheduling a meeting, we'd like clarity of what the agenda items are before searching for a date, so that we can concur that there would be a majority present of each body to actually hold the meeting. Thank you.
Okay. You know, the ending fund balance is not something to sneeze at. The EOTC has a lot of opportunity, a lot of opportunity to be a big player for our Upper Valley region and even beyond for transit. And so, you know, with the talk of going to one meeting a year and the like, I'm concerned that we're not going to move forward the EOTC work that the EOTC should be doing. That being said, we've had a hard time moving that work forward, even with meetings throughout the year. So I'm really hopeful in this next year that we can get EOTC on some kind of direct direction and path, because it feels right now like we don't quite have it. But like I said, the money that's coming in is, it used to be lock boxes, it used to be, what, about $11 million, and nine million of it was allocated. So we were really talking about limited opportunity, but we have more opportunity here, and I do think that is a great opportunity for the three entities to forward transit in our Upper Valley. So I'm looking forward to the EOTC reconvening and getting some direction together. I will say that, you know, speaking with council members about the arrangement and how this budget came to us, you know, there is concern about kind of the City of Aspen's part and play in this. As I pointed out at the EOTC meeting, you know, the City of Aspen lockbox for monies for the entrance to Aspen is no longer there. There is still a placeholder for $6 million for Snowmass and such, and Ward was saying tonight that there just seems to be maybe a lack of return to the City of Aspen. I don't know, I just want to have those conversations in the new year. EOTC can be something greater than it has been. There is great opportunity there. So I'll support this budget this evening. I support the questions that my fellow council members have brought forward, but thank you guys, and thank you guys for both being here tonight. Really appreciate that.
Of course.
Are there any other council member comments or questions? Ward, go right ahead. You're muted again. I hope that wasn't some more good stuff from you.
Yeah, that was the best stuff, besides the last time I muted myself. I'm going to support this, but I really want to see more, a better budget presentation, and I want to see transparency. And I think if we're going to be meaningful and we have to meet more often and give more guidance, so I reluctantly approve this, but I think we can do much better.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to pass the 2025 EOTC budget.
Second?
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for the 2025 EOTC budget?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
I'm a yes. Thank you. Thank you again for the additional time. All right, council members, our last item is a discussion regarding APCHA board applicants. There is one opening on the APCHA board. Allison Bechtet's seat has been vacated, and we had two applicants. We had Scott and John, Dr. John, was it? And so we just, it's a joint appointment, so we just need to give some of our preference. So if anybody wants to start with this conversation, that'd be great.
Yeah, I liked both of them, but I would like, I'll be voting for Scott tonight for the local aspect. He lives in APCHA housing, and I think he'd be a great member on this board. I hope Dr. John sticks with it and comes back and applies again, but I believe Scott, living in APCHA and being of the mindset he has, will be a tremendous benefit to this board.
Thank you for that initial. I was going to ask, you know, John is an economist, and he, I believe, shared a little bit more about the economics and economic insight maybe at the county. And I was wondering, for somebody to offer themselves as an economic advisor, if you will, or to participate with APCHA in that way, Sarah, is that a possibility for somebody that has that kind of expertise that says, hey, I'm just interested in talking? Would the APCHA board reach out to that person? How could they incorporate, you know, good input from somebody that...
I would defer to the APCHA chair about how he would like to handle that conversation. One of the things that we sometimes need to be mindful of is that there also needs to be some objectivity in that advice, or there needs to be a selection process associated with how that advice is obtained. So just as a heads up, they have some things like that they would need to think through, and I would encourage if that's how this board feels, is that you let your APCHA representatives know.
Thank you. Then I would let my APCHA representatives know. I think that there might be, if John is not appointed, I think there might be an opportunity to engage him, and I think that you should take that to your board chair and see if that's a possibility, or reach out to John himself and see if that's of interest if he does not get appointed. Ward, your comments, please?
Yeah, I think both highly qualified. I agree with Sam that Scott, I think, should be the at-large seat on the board with his lifetime in Aspen and living in employee housing. I think he brings a lot of environmental awareness and experience, but I would really like to see Dr. John as an ex-physio member to become engaged, to invite his engagement. And we've seen in a number of boards, in APCHA is no different, that an alternate who may not be a voting member has very much say as an ability to persuade the conversation as a voting member. So an ex-physio member is something that I will certainly bring forward to the APCHA board about keeping that option open and engaging John, because it's, I think, a depth of knowledge that we could benefit from on the APCHA board. But I do support Scott.
Thank you. John?
I would say choosing between John and Scott is probably the most difficult board position, choice I've had to make. I also think Scott is my choice. He is my choice. I thought also that his history in Aspen and also his background in Boulder and all the things he accomplished down there were pretty amazing. So there it is.
Thank you.
I have a preference for John. I think he's an international expert on housing policy, and we'd be leaving a lot of really interesting outside-the-box thinking on the table if we didn't appoint him. We have, we're fortunate to have a lot of members already seated on the board that have a lot of inside knowledge and experience, and I really think that this is a unique opportunity to gain some insight and understand some policies which have worked and not worked in other communities. And I really think that all that you should consider, John, I think it's a super unique and privileged opportunity to have someone like that on the APCHA board.
Thank you for that. We, I'll support Scott this evening. I didn't, John didn't necessarily present himself that way to me in that meeting. I do agree with you that he's got some knowledge, expertise, and areas that he can contribute, without a doubt. They're both great candidates, but I didn't get all of that from him, from our interview. I'll support Scott this evening as well. It sounds like we have four to one support for Scott as our appointee, but the way this works is that we give that information back to the county, and then we will see what the county, Board of County Commissioners come back with. With that...
Mr. Mayor, staff is requesting council go into executive session pursuant to CRS Section 2464024A, purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, real or personal property interest. For B, conference with attorney for the local public body, purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions. For E, determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations. And for F, personnel. Specific items for discussion involve the following: ongoing litigation, specifically the Centennial Owners Association versus the City of Aspen, legal advice regarding the 1994 settlement agreement in Centennial Aspen Two Limited Partnership. And it was on the agenda, city manager review of councils, so chooses to discuss that. If council votes to go into executive session, the executive session will be recorded, and the recording will be maintained by the clerk for a period of not less than 90 days. As always, council will not reconvene in these chambers to adjourn this meeting. It will be, the executive session and adjournment will be downstairs.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session, and at this time, I'll say minus the city manager review.
I'll second.
I would like to provide you a very short update.
With, so city manager review? Okay, fine. I'll make a friendly amendment with the city manager review.
Acceptance.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for going into his executive session, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes. All right. Thank you, as always, to grassroots. And Ward, we'll see you in a bit. And everybody, have a wonderful night. Watch yourself driving and walking out there on the streets, they are icy. Have a good evening.